Walker's asked me to emcee this evening, so. A bunch of kids go into a parochial school and they're in line and there was a big basket of apples and one of them got to put a sign on the apples that said, "God's watching, only take one." Well, at the end of the line, there was a bucket of cookies. Some kid wrote a note and said, "God's watching the apples, take as many as you can." We have established a corps, as you can well imagine. So I'm going to call a meeting to order and the purpose of this meeting is to vote to recall the Board of Directors and if required, vote on new board members. And Matt has graciously consented to overseeing the first part of this. We were hoping to have, be done with discussion by seven thirty, but I think we'll pass it. You just need to remember, nine o'clock, we alternate in pumpkins and we have to be out. So let's keep that in mind. Matt? Okay, well, I think the next process is to... Test, test. I think the next process, my, probably Jane Clark is actually going to run the meeting. I can sort of run around without the fires as a pre-computer. Walker and I talked about me doing this and I want to reassure you that I've tried to do everything as best I can to make certain that we follow proper procedure. We follow Colorado law, we follow our HOA documents and law rules and orders as well. So are you prepared to go?
Yes.
Just want to make sure that we did the registration thing properly. For all of those who have proxies, did you get multiple envelopes? Any questions about what was going on out there? Well, how many do you have? Well, that's... Each household should have at least two envelopes. If we have more than two, we have to update maps.
Can you just introduce yourself?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm Matt Clark. I live at twenty-six eighty-eight Edwater Drive. I'm a homeowner of Perry and the Sherif County. So I've only been here about a year, but I did move in till last October. And I just took a keen interest in all of this because I was very concerned about things that were going on in the neighborhood and I felt like I could help.
Excuse me, this fan is really loud. It's hard to hear back here. You guys can just make sure to speak up.
Yeah, I made it to the volume somewhere. We'll do a testing to make sure you can hear well enough. Okay, I'm getting thumbs up. Okay, thank you. Let me see if it works in the holder. Can you all hear me equally as well? Very good, very good. First off, what am I doing here? I'm Jane Clark. I live at fourteen eleven Tributary Court. Part of the time, most of the time now. I've been a homeowner for nearly four years. I'm quite familiar with parliamentary procedure and the Overlook HOA rules and regulations mandate, but Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised, be followed for our meetings. So the first step really after calling a meeting to order is to have a corps established. And if you all haven't read your bylaws lately, our bylaws say that only ten percent of the household members need to be present. Obviously, there are, with eighty-seven households, there are more than ninety people here, so we met that requirement. And Buck graciously presented the purpose of this special meeting. So the next thing to do is just proceed with the meeting and I'd like to thank Walker, Buck, and whoever else would be appropriate for agreeing to let me run this meeting. Hardly know many of you, met some of you now, but I think I can remain very neutral and keep an efficient meeting. I don't really know much about the history of the HOA, so I think I could be able to chair this meeting with impartiality and just lean. And I have reviewed extensively the HOA bylaws, rules and regs, and CCNRs, and a little bit of the Claremore County and Colorado State laws, but I'm not an expert on those. But that's why I agreed to manage this meeting so we can proceed. Some guidelines to remind you all about Robert's Rules of Order and the Overlook HOA bylaws. First off, each speaker should request to speak from the presiding chair, meaning me, either by a raise of hand or by standing, and must be acknowledged by me before speaking. You can just refer to me as Jane. You don't have to say, you know, Madam Chairman or something. Just Jane is good. Any comments should be addressed to the presiding chair of the meeting. You present motions to me, I repeat the motions to the HOA members. You present comments to me, and if things need repeating, I'll repeat them, but I'll explain some of that a little bit more in a minute. Because of the relatively large number of people here and with the conservation of time in mind, only one person should speak at a time. I think we would all appreciate that. But during debate, any one member may speak only twice on any one issue. And this is according to Robert's Rules of Order, all in the line of being a equal, free, easily represented society or organization. Also, when you stand and ask to be addressed, please state your first and last names before speaking, so those of us who don't know may get to know you and your name can be correctly recorded for the minutes or documenting methods. If I need to, and I hope I don't have to do this excessively, but if I need to, I will use a gavel to call the meeting to order or call someone out of order. And if I have to use the gavel in that manner, I expect everything to become quiet very quickly. Now, let me get a couple of things out. I didn't expect to take over this quick. This is Robert's Rules of Order, if nobody's seen them recently. I don't think anybody has all the answers in their head, but fortunately, it's very well documented and indexed so that things can be easily referenced, and I have some easy references available here. Okay, so let's get started. Are, did I hear any motion to address how long we would choose to have?
Yes.
The chair recognizes Matt.
I'm Matt Clark. I'd like to make a motion to keep the meeting running efficiently.
I can't hear.
Matt Clark, I'd like to make a motion to keep the meeting running efficiently, that we also follow Robert's Rules of Order suggestion to limit the amount of time each speaker can speak to two minutes. Now, you can address an issue twice, so that would be a total of four minutes per issue. But I'm hoping you have plenty of time to get your message out and allow others to speak equally.
Thank you. You've got it down for seconding. Now, the reason we handed out the blue cards... Yeah, the reason we handed out the blue cards is for easy voting, but accurate voting on these issues without having to do a ballot vote on some of these issues. The concerning ballots will be a secret ballot, but for example, this motion, now seconded, is open for discussion. Are there any comments or questions? May I have a motion to call a question? Thank you. So the motion is, Matt has moved that during this meeting, debate for each issue will be limited to two minutes for any voting member, and that in compliance with Robert's Rules of Order, each voting member may speak twice to each issue. He also moved that each voting discussion, or will you? Okay. So that's the, that's the motion at this point. All in favor of this motion, hold up your votes by your blue cards. Okay, are there any... okay, got them. Are there any who vote no? Thank you. The motion passes. Next, our timer is here, and when we begin any discussions, he has a yellow paper. I'm going to have him sit up here, and he has a yellow paper to hold up with a thirty-second warning and a red paper to hold up with times up. Now, you've all, you must all have been watching some of the governmental hearings in the past year, and it's the same kind of thing here. Time is up, please finish and sit down quickly. So he'll be guiding you with that and I'll be basically enforcing the time. Any questions about that? Thank you. Okay, we're going to get to the meat of this, which the first purpose of this meeting is to remove the current Board of Directors.
I, Andrew Campbell, move that by secret ballot, the results of which are to be counted in front of the HOA members at this meeting, all current directors of the Board of Directors of the Poorer Overlook HOA be removed effective immediately.
Do I hear a second? Many. Any discussion? No discussion? Matt, in the back row, please.
Why?
Why? Who, do you want to address that, Matt?
I'm going to try to be fair about this and represent the other sides equally. The group who brought forth a petition to have the current board removed, I'm going to refer to them as the Recall Committee, felt as though there were justified reasons, we're calling them grievances, that the board has been dysfunctional and done things improperly. They submitted a grievance list to the current board last Thursday. That grievance list, I think, was eight members strong. Many of you probably received the handout today. Does anybody want one who didn't get one? Look at you, Almory. It was shared with Walker Thursday. Anyway, this grievance list was generated from looking at communication within the board, letters and emails to themselves, looking at letters from the HOA attorney, and minutes of the meetings that they have held. They felt as though they were generated honestly and fairly according to what they were meeting and interpreting from those documents. The Recall Committee also put forth a platform, which I think was made available to you tonight. If anybody needs a copy of that, I'll get you up there quickly. They also put forth what they thought would be the platform that the candidates that they would like to see elected to the new board would follow and try to do. So that's kind of the essence, is that there were many, many grievances that were felt that indicated the board was dysfunctional. Now, I can go get that list. I don't have it down by memory and read them to you, or you can wait for me to get your handout really quickly and read through them yourself. Does that answer your question?
That's one side.
Yes, Buck?
That's number one side.
Yes, that's one side. So she asked why, so that's what I answered. If someone would like to say why that's inappropriate, I welcome that, or I think others would do that as well. The, the current board has defended themselves and felt as though they have done a good job. They've had some distractions that were unwelcome. They claim that they have filed, they have followed laws and rules properly to the best of their ability. So it's, it's a little bit of, you know, who do you believe and what evidence do you need for that? When presented with the Recall Committee's grievances, I'm just going to tell you what I personally heard as feedback. I've heard, number one, that they didn't know any better, that they didn't know that there were laws and rules to be followed. I find that a little disturbing, particularly since one of the board members has been on the board for ten, not on this board, the eighth HOA board for ten years. Another reason, given to me by three different board members, was that the paperwork that was used to generate that grievance list does not reflect what actually went on in their meetings and their communication. That's very possible. We all know minutes don't cover everything, for example, but that in itself represents some dysfunction that you don't take the minutes properly or know what's important to write down. I will mention that, that there were two compromises that were brought up by some interested neighborhood members, and there were some that represented the board's side, there were some that represented the Recall Committee's side, and then some that were neutral. The first compromise offered was to have the current president of the board step down and then just replace that individual, and I won't say he was the only individual that we were interested in having removed, that the Recall Committee was having, was interested in having removed. That offer was declined. I'm, I'm loath to tell you the reason given for that. It's upsetting to me, the reason. Do you want to hear it? The, the reason was that this person's integrity was more important than, than doing what would maybe have helped the neighborhood take a step forward to healing and coming together and avoiding a contentious meeting tonight. The second compromise, because that was declined, a second compromise was offered. This one was to allow the current board to stay in place, but to allow additional members to be voted onto the board, the thinking being that perhaps that would allow the new board to be tilted in the favor of the Recall Committee, you know, number wise. That was declined by the Recall Committee because they had, it was very long review with the Recall Committee. They were very open to, to hearing about it and they discussed it for close to an hour while I was present. The Recall Committee declined to accept that compromise because they felt like it was still not in the best interest of the committee, of the neighborhood, OHA owners, and that they could offer something better and get us healing up more quickly, and they believed in, in their reasons and their feelings in that regard. So two opportunities were missed to avoid some contention, to allow us healing process to start over. You could take your own assessment of, you know, why those compromises weren't followed through. Yes, Buck? Yes? Any questions about what I said, other than, I know Buck wants to speak in my cleavage. Yes?
Was there internal fighting, physically or verbally, within the board? I'm just asking just to know because I heard rumors of that. Do you hear it?
Excuse me, you said internal fighting?
Yeah.
Do you mean verbally, physically? What do you mean? Or would you like to answer that?
I don't know what's going on, so I'm asking for a question.
Well, I, I am not witness to any of that, other than through messages and emails, so I can't honestly answer that.
Keith?
Yeah, can you repeat the question from the audience if you want to have, so everybody has a privilege to ask?
Yes, that, that should be done. And your name?
Dan Benrell.
Dan has asked, was there any fighting amongst the current board members? Matt tried to clarify, you mean physically or verbally or what? Has anyone witnessed to any of this? Oh, sorry Buck, you're over there. I've got to learn to look over there. Thank you. Buck, please.
I have a pretty good voice. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. It's a board. There was disagreement. That should go without saying. There was never, ever any physical fight. Yeah. That answers your question. Now, what I wanted to address in this is, it is a mis, no, it's a mistake to think that we have not been following rules and regs. We have. Now, I'm going to tell you as forepresident, have there been errors? Yeah. It's a board. There were, in my opinion, there were some errors that we made in procedure. That's it. This board has been governing with transparency the entire time. We opened all of the meetings to the outside. The fourth board never did that. There was not one time in ten years prior to that that there was an open board meeting. Not one time. So we have been very open on that. We have absolutely worked as a team. We have a complete functioning ACC. We've had people volunteering to work on different landscaping projects. It could not be more democratic. We have research, a management company, and that is a matter of record on the board notes. So that, in itself, it astonishes me that this meeting would be on there. All of our names were on the website. So to have this kind, tell me how I'm going to...
Thirty seconds left.
All of the architectural guidelines were on the website. Every single document from the HOA was on the website. And I'm pointing, I know I'm not supposed to do that. So, and we do publish all the timing dates of all meetings and we have published all of the minutes. So those things have all been done. It's an absolute error to think that has not happened.
Thanks, Buck. Other discussion? Andy?
Hi, I'm Andy Mawory. I've been on the board, uh, more than a year and a half, two years. And I disagree.
Can you speak up, please?
Sure.
If you'd like to come up front, please. So I'm Andy Mawory. I've been on the board and I've been the author of some of the documentation about the things that we did not do right, and it's true. I think the first time that anybody even brought up CCIOA or Nonprofit Act was late last year, and we're in our second year of doing this. We had no awareness that there were things that we should be looking at, and I would say our understanding of the governing documents was weak at best. And as a result of, in particular, one issue, we dove deep and started to look at what was actually required of us. And I think the big point of contention was how somebody gets a hearing here, or a fair hearing. And I would say the, the biggest problem was in that issue. We had owners that were being threatened with up to twenty thousand dollars in expense. And, you know, it's one thing to say that we're volunteers, but it's another to say that we're volunteers that have the power to fine or cause expense for others. And when we got to the issue of whether or not they could have a hearing, it was a joke. I mean, to have a meeting called for the third time after we voted, then somebody went to the attorney, came back and said that the first vote wasn't valid, that we voted a second time, then they demanded a hearing, and instead of giving them a hearing, we took a lever from their attorney and waved it in the air and said, "This is the representation at this meeting." And then we tried to make that meeting an executive session so no one would find out about it. I've documented this the best that I can, and I know it's a lot of reading, and I'm not going to re-litigate all of it. But in all, in all seriousness, if you haven't taken the time to take a look at what we've gotten wrong, there's no way to get it right in the future. And there is the ability to excuse mistakes. That's actually allowed, but you can't say we did nothing wrong. Take a look at it. I did my, did my duty, and there should have been an impartial fact-finding process after filing a written report. This board won't look at it.
Any other discussion? Yes?
May I close? I'm sorry, Sam. Can I close with a question to Andy? Andy?
Yes, your name?
Can you tell me why you're supposed to be only closer to the speaker? My understanding of how boards are supposed to work is they speak with one voice. Why did you speak and none of your colleagues on the board?
My answer to that, it was a progressive escalation. So initially, I tried to handle things discreetly with just the officers. I went to the officers and said, "Hey, we have a problem and we're creating legal liability, not only for us as a board, but us as individual board members and for the association overall." Once we cross the line into wanton and willful acts, it's serious, and there are more repercussions than probably most of you know about, and I didn't know about it myself. Upon that wake-up call, I started to go back through the decisions that we made last year, and I had created a list, and I said, "We need to get to the documents regarding those issues." And I could not obtain those documents from the chairs of those committees. At that point, I decided to escalate to the point where I brought it to the full board's attention with a written report. That should have resulted in an impartial fact-finding process that never began. And in seeking the documents, I ended up going directly to the attorney and had a roadblock put in place. I just asked for the attorney to say, "Well, what advice did you give us on the matter that was the, of the biggest contention?" And in the end, he disclosed he didn't give advice of any significance at all. And that directly contradicted what was said in the meeting, caused a revote on a board decision, and I find that that misrepresentation escalated matters to the point where if I can't get the board to act, then in this community, the owners can overrule the board. The board is not the final say. And so that's the reason to then bring it to the attention of everyone. There was no possibility... There was no possibility of getting this board to do the right thing, and by the way, impartial fact-finding is only the beginning of the process. If after finding that these things are true, then you can have discretion about what the consequences or actions are after that. But we never established whether or not these are or are not the facts, and that's still out there right now.
For all my time, thank you. Yes, Erv?
My name is Erv Devenburg, and-
Come on up and use the microphone, I guess.
I'm referring to Yelpin back here. No.
It doesn't carry a miss.
All right, I'm sorry. My name is Erv Devenburg, and I'm one of those board members who went to see the attorney. I am not sure what Andy is talking about, but I will tell you what the attorney told us, and it was advice. We talked about what we need to do to protect the community's rules and regulations with him. We talked about how do we handle this moving forward? His advice to us was very clear. He said, if this family member have not lawyered up, the best thing would be to talk directly to them. Our comment in unison was, that's great, that's what we'll go back and do. Unfortunately, when we got back, we got a letter from the family's attorney, and according to the advice and the words of the lawyer, if they have not lawyered up yet, the best thing was to talk to them. Since they lawyered up, we thought we should not speak anymore.
Jared, may I just- Hi, I'm just going to read from my notes. My name is Linda Brucker. Excuse me? Linda Brucker. We replaced our roof, believing that we were adhering to the ACC's blanket approval of similar color. In fact, two weeks prior, we submitted a request to the ACC with respect to painting our house. We have a documented history of requesting permission from the ACC prior to beginning work, whether it be exterior paint, planting trees, or any major changes to landscaping. If we had thought for an instant we were outside the similar color guidelines as posted, we would have submitted a variance request as our prior history supports. I'm not seeing the board have a like or wrath or agree with us. What I am seeing is as neighbors, we should be able to expect and receive at a minimum a more professional handling of these issues. The current board issued vague criteria and then tried to enforce personal interpretations ultimately to cost us personally and the association as a whole. The stress and anxiety associated with proceedings and to notice from the HOA, especially when you don't think you violated any policy, is unmanageable. When we reached out to the board on more than several occasions, and I have the dates, we were met with silence, not even an acknowledgement that we had sent a message. It took over a month from the initial letter for the board to tell us they would come to a decision in yet another two weeks. So after a month and a half, we finally received the violation from the board, and at that time, we were denied the hearing and appeals process as stated in our bylaws. We agree and support standards for our neighborhood, we love our neighborhood, but they need to be clearly stated and reasonably enforced in a transparent nature. Our experience was anything but that, and we would hate to see anybody else go do it with we did. Thank you for listening.
Any other discussion or questions? Yes, please, state your names, Karen.
Hi, I'm Suzie Kelly, and this is going to be off-subject a little bit, this area of discussion, but my stomach is just turning. And this is a wonderful neighborhood, filled with wonderful people, and it's obvious to me-
Need to address the issue before us right now, if you'd like to speak later in general.
Okay, the issue is contention in our neighborhood, and we're each having ideas about was this, who was right, who was wrong, regulations, rules, and so on. I just would like to reset us a little bit and have us think about the peaceful neighborhood we're after.
I'm sorry.
That's it.
Okay. There's a motion before the body by Andrew Campbell. Is there any other discussion about this motion?
Oh, good evening, Walker Flannery, I'm one of the board members. I'll address that to you, Ms. Brucker. Who did you reach out to on the board specifically? I know you didn't, Jeff, myself-
Do you have an order or do you like to address the members here?
Well, my question is, I'd like to know who Andrew Campbell reached out to.
It's not his people.
Pardon me. Ms. Brucker, I'm pardon me, as to who she reached out to.
Just a reminder, you have to address the chair. Excuse me, I will- I will address the question to Linda Brucker. Linda, do you recall, or are you still aware of who you reached out to?
Yes, to the entire board, we sent out, and I have this sent on 10/11, 10/15. So the 10/11, we were trying to understand what the issue was, we didn't even know what we were violating to that point. We were just told we can't proceed, so we're like, okay. Didn't hear anything that we're going to be out of town, we'll get back, no, we're not, one word from one board member. Thank you. On 10/15, we sent in a second request to meet with the board, come to our house, can we talk about this? We don't know what the problem is. Still no response. 10/17, third request for the board to respond, nothing. And so, Erv, when you say that this family went to get an attorney, and we got an attorney after three different tries of trying to contact the board, our neighbors without a response. And so at that point, to protect ourselves, we didn't feel like we had a choice, we're not hearing.
Do you want to address other members of the body? They all have to make a motion to close discussion.
Okay, a motion has been made to close the discussion on the motion to vote on Andy Campbell's motion to, by secret ballot, the results of which are to be counted in front of the HOA at this meeting, all current directors from the Board of Directors of the Pooter Overlook HOA to be removed immediately. There is a second by bill. Okay, now, this is, this can be done by a secret ballot. Well, wait a minute, this motion to close discussion is not up for debate by Robert Rules of Order. So, this vote will be done by your blue cards?
No.
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 No. The motion to close discussion will be done by the blue card. We need a blue card here, for one. Everybody else have a blue card? With the correct number on it for the properties you represent. The chair recognizes Erv.
I'd like to say in response to those comments-
Erv, I still can't-
I'd like to respond to some of those comments that weren't exactly accurate. I could respond to the members that I received at the letter.
What members? Please be specific.
To the Bruckers?
Okay, that, I thought you were talking about the whole HOA.
And I stated that the board was out of town, there weren't any other board members that would be to the end of the month, it was according to the agreement. They also sent me a notice that they would like to take a walk around the neighborhood and show us the different color variations in the neighborhood. And my response to that was, what we're looking at are the different variations of weather with the driftwood, by different manufacturers. And after that, I didn't receive that the response in comments.
Thank you.
Jack, we have a, a, a order, we have a motion to go on.
Yes, there it is, and that should be held to the discuss, to the motion, which is to end discussion of the original motion. So, with your blue cards, everybody have your blue cards now with the correct number on them. And I've requested two people who walked through the door to do the counting for us independently, so that the numbers should coincide, let's say. So, all those who are in favor of ending this discussion, please raise your blue card. Thanks for your patience.
Hold on, we're going to count this half, second, this half first.
Please, quickly. Please hold them up, I know your shoulders may get a little fatigued, but I'll give you a massage after. Ladies are done. You can put your hands down now, and- Are you ready for the next vote? Ladies?
Yes.
Okay, and now, for those opposed to closing this discussion, raise your blue cards. You ready to have their hands put down? Are you ready for their hands to go down?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And you will give me the results, please. There are thirty-six votes to end this discussion, and thirty votes to continue it. This is the type of motion that passes by majority, so this, this discussion has now been ended.
Can you follow the third question?
Yes.
Can you start a new motion when you have a current motion?
Yes. If it, if it applies to the circumstance. The question was, can a new motion be applied when another motion is before the body? And yes, if it's pertinent and relevant, and sort of a subsection, if you will, of the original motion, it may be presented and may be accepted. Any other questions? Okay, well, it's time to do the voting. A secret ballot will be found in each of your envelopes, the thin one. The ballot is on a pink sheet. It has, it's entitled dismissal of the current board, and you are to circle yea, or nay, or abstain. Pass out the baskets. Excuse me, a question here?
Yes, my question was, the actual secret ballot approved? Does that ever vote at all?
It's standard Roberts Rules of Order to do secret ballots, especially if anything is contentious, and I believe this is one of those cases.
But so it's kind of your decision as to whether or not to have a secret ballot?
No, it's, it's not just mine, it's in Roberts Rules of Order and reviewed by many people, and as I understand it, it was, the method was also acceptable by the current board.
But isn't that a point of contention that could do away with the vote? In the sense that-
No, it's, a secret ballot is the most diplomatic, and if you will, all-American way to register votes. And that's the way it should be done, especially for nominees of boards of director. Yes.
Okay. There was a motion to, you know, open the debate and to have a debate on yourself.
There was not a motion to open a debate, there was a motion made, there was then was seconded, and then the logical thing to do is have a discussion.
Right, and so you have a discussion, and then the second motion was to end the debate, but was there actually a, a motion?
End the debate, is what you're asking.
To end the-
You're correct. Right. You're correct, we voted on whether the motion-
I don't, I don't, I'm just asking about procedure, because I'm a little confused.
There, the, the motion on the floor was the motion to end the discussion, so there should be, and that passed. So now, the motion to, which is to vote for and remove the board, so we're taking that action now with the pink secret ballot. Does that make sense for everybody?
Can't you just re-read the motion?
I will be happy to re-read the motion.
I, Andrew Campbell, move that by secret ballot, the results of which to be counted in front of the HOA members at this meeting, all current directors of the Board of Directors of the Pooter Overlook HOA be removed effective immediately. Yes?
Maybe no names, but it's a board.
Yes. The current board consists of Walker Flannery, Buck Hammond, Andy Mowery, Gloria Jones, Ben Johnson. Yes. Stand up, please.
Can they stand, just so we can see in the mirror?
Yes, would the current board please stand so you can recognize them? Walker Flannery's introduced himself, Buck, I don't know if he introduced himself, but this is, I don't know your last name Buck, sorry. Andy Mowery, Ben Johnson, and Gloria, and I'm sorry, I don't know your last name off the top of my head.
Jones.
Jones, how could I go wrong? Other questions? Yes.
My name's Jack, I hope you can all hear me. I'm there in the neighborhood, so I haven't been around for any of this, but this is a big meeting, and all I've heard so far is that they screwed up on someone's roof or painting, and I'm just wondering, is, what else is there?
Thank you.
And why are we removing a whole board?
I'm going to address that because that's not all you've heard, and you could have picked up a paper listing the grievances that were-
It's not very specific on that paper.
Well, specifics such as the minutes, some, a great number of people have determined that the minutes don't represent what actually went on, that individual board members made individual- That individual board members made individual decisions about things.
I have a point of order.
Yes.
I believe you are out of order.
No, I'm the chair, and I can address questions addressed to the chair. Yes, I can.
I am making this statement that I believe you are out of order. And I, I would request respectfully, you look it up in the book and show us what it says. That you can continue the discussion after you said the discussion cannot be continued.
I'm not continuing a discussion.
Yes, you are. You ask questions, they ask questions, you're answering questions.
And I think you're looking for a second on your motion to move towards a vote.
We have a second on the motion to move towards a vote. If we're past discussion, er. No, I'm sorry. If I make any error, please forgive me. But, and I'm trying to speed this along, and we're already at eight o'clock. And I've been patient with many of you. But let's get down to business. We are here, under the motion of basically terminating the current board from their duties immediately, and electing new board members. Call through the question. Excuse me? Okay. And we've already done that and discussed it. So now, I'm instructing you about how to vote. Pull the pink ballot out. It is a secret ballot, which is, as I said, the most American way and most honest way, and never to be found out who circled what way. These ballots will be kept for, uh, as long as necessary, which might be forever at my house, in a bag that's stapled by the vote counters. And so if there's any contention, they will be able to be referred to. Okay, now let me explain what... Um, go ahead, hand those out. Does anyone not have a secret ballot or a pen? Do we have a total count bill on the number?
Sixty-six votes.
Sixty-six votes are... No, no, do not stick them back in the envelope. Please just ideally fold them once, put them in the basket as the basket comes to you, and they will be collected. And we, I have asked, uh, Keith to read the ballot. Laurie's going to supervise. And Jeannie's going to, um, be the tally person of these votes. And it will be done up here for you three. Come up here, please. This way it will all be witnessed, unlike, as I understand it, any other HOA meeting.
That is not true.
Uh, only by history I'm told that's not true.
That's one person that counted votes previously at HOA meetings? That is not true.
Okay, thank you, that's enough. Okay, um, an explanation of this. The, we are going to collect all the ballots. Has everybody turned in their ballot who chooses to? Just, we'll wait a few more minutes then. And I guess any of you are welcome to tally along as you would choose any other ballots that need to be submitted. Okay, receipt of ballots are now complete. And the counting will begin for whether or not the current board is re, uh, is removed effectively immediately, and election of new board members are to occur. Please go. I want you to call it out loud. Jeannie will tally. And Laurie is our so-called supervisor to assure to us all that they've done their right job. So begin, please. No, where's the bags? Each ball, each ballot will go in a different bag, sorry. And the bag should be written on that this is for removal. No, they just put all the ballots in the same... Yes, all kept together. Can you hear okay?
No.
First one was a yea.
First one's a yea, yea. 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 Nay. 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 Yea. Nay. 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 Yea. 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 Nay. Yea. Nay. Yea. 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 Nay. Yea. Nay. 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 Yea. Nay. 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 Yea. Nay. Yea. Yea. Nay. Yea. Yea. Nay. Yea. Nay. Yea. 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 Nay. Yea. Yea. Nay. Yea. Nay. Yea. 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 Abstain.
I will clarify that by Roberts Rules of Order, an abstain will go toward the, what the majority vote is. It's... Okay, fine.
Yea. 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 Nay.
Now, including votes and proxies, I'm told by our check-in chairmen of the street that there should be sixty-six total votes. So we will now have our...
One person actually for a family emergency. So she did not cast a vote.
That's seven is correct.
So how did we get four more? There were four ballots that were taken in at the end.
Well, first, uh...
There were two, yes, my fault. Ma'am?
I may have mistaken to hand out two proxy votes to Walker. That's what that was skirmish was about, apparently skirmish, but, uh, action. So that's two of them, and, uh, is the...
The, I almost forgot to vote, and so I, that was my own vote that I added to the basket at one point. I did check in. Thanks for your patience.
Why do I figure that out? Just a housekeeping motion. I know we rented the room from just seven to nine. If we go over a little bit, it's not gonna be a huge issue, except for the fact we're all gonna be tired. We actually have till nine-thirty. They gave us a half hour cleaning the room up. And we can also go beyond nine-thirty if necessary. I hope not. And, and the housekeepers will just leave a note for the rental people, and know we went over. But in doing that, you get a small additional bill. But hopefully the actions that get paid occur, or the meeting may be over in just the next thirty seconds, if not.
Okay, we have seventy votes, and there are sixty-seven, um, ballots somehow. They were all pink, I saw.
We must have missed people checking in because they obviously got ballots. So...
Walker, are you...? Well, I won't say that. Okay, it, well, it does not matter. Um, I will tell you, the yays received forty-four votes, the nays twenty-five, and abstain one. So even if we sway three or four or five votes, one way or another, the yays carry the motion to, to dismember the board of directors. Dismember, that's a wrong word, sorry. I'm always referred to anatomy. To dismiss the current board immediately. And now we will proceed to election of new directors. And write that that's the motion to remove... No, no, I know who you are, but do staple it, Ben. Is there a stapler somewhere? Okay. Now, let me just explain briefly the nomination process. First, we're going to have, as a body, we're going to have to decide how many board members the HOA wants. And then, of course, that will have to have a motion seconded and, uh, indicated by the blue card. Second, we are going to have a nomination for one position on the Board of Directors. We'll call him Position A. This does not refer to any officer. The board itself will designate officers among themselves. But any nomination must be seconded, and the nomination must be accepted. Then we'll need a motion to close nominations, and that will be needing to be seconded with a vote to close, again, the blue cards. Each nominee then, who has accepted the nominee, nomination, will then have two minutes to speak. And they will be recognized by the chair. The nominations will be recorded on the whiteboard, hopefully so that we get names, since we all don't know each other very, very well, or generally. Um, but hopefully we'll get the names correct. Once the nominee, um, the nominees are made for Director A, a motion to close discussion and to move for the vote of the nominees. Okay, I'm being advised, instead of saying A, to call it Director One, so that's what's on your ballots. And this will be in your envelope number two. So, look for your envelope that says Director Number One, Vote Number One. And this will be the ballot to use next. It's a bright blue color like your number card. Does everybody have a Director Number One, Vote Number One? Ma'am? I determined the number. The, the first person elected is Director Number One.
No, the number we had to...
We will do that after I finish my explanation. Thank you. And after that, then we will sequence to Director Number Two, Number Three, Number Four, and Number Five, or however many we first vote on, uh, to hear, um, how many directors the HOA wants to have. Now, um, I, although I've appointed these people to count the ballots, I would, um, like to entertain... or hear a motion to designate them to continue on to count ballots for this body.
I, Amber Lynn Verter, move to have Jeannie Babbitt and Keith Knight announcing the ballot votes, and that Laurie Sand will oversee the work to ensure accuracy.
Okay, the most... Motion is to have Keith and Jeannie count. Keith read the ballots, Jeannie count the ballots, and Laurie Sand to supervise the process of ballot counting. A second was made up here by Matt. Please have your blue cards ready, and... Excuse me? Um, that's not something that needs to be discussed. Okay. All in favor of having these people continue to count ballots for us, please raise your cards, and I will count and add. Yeah, all opposed now? Thank you. That made it easy. We tried to do something easy. Okay. Now, proceed with the actual election. Uh, Chair recognizes Linda.
I, Linda Brucker, move that the HOA elect five directors to the Board of Directors by the process of nominations and election by separate secret ballots for each of the five director positions.
I've heard numerous seconds discussion, or...
Come up here, please.
I'm not really familiar with all the intricate, uh, rules of every page, but it does say something to the extent that we can have up to nine board members. Yes, and this meeting was not stated to limit any number of board members, but just to vote for board members. I believe, in my opinion, that the rest of the community at large didn't have that opportunity to know that they were voting for this tonight, that there's gonna be a limitation of their bylaws and rules. I would say that that should be brought to the general meeting, where everybody has opportunity to know that this is what's gonna be discussed and voted on, because this was not shared with the entire community.
I make a motion to keep our bylaws as they are stated.
I'll second that.
Just a minute, I need to respond. It is true that the bylaws state that there can be up to nine Board of Directors, our HOA bylaws. That doesn't mean you have to have nine. And it is appropriate that a motion be made at this meeting, because we are electing Boards of Directors of the Board, and so that's why I accepted this motion, and it's been seconded. So it does not need to be displaced if... Excuse me, we're not into the... You've already spoken once. I would have to have somebody else from the other side, um, of the issues be... Matt, you raised your hand first.
So, Matt Clark, I'd like to address his comment. The current board sits at five. The purpose... Second purpose of this meeting was to re-elect a new board, or to elect a new board. It follows that if the current board is functioning at five, uh, the new board could function at five as well. I think is correct, the number of board members can be anything from three to nine.
From one to nine.
From one to nine, excuse me. I would... I would suggest that, uh, even as Herb maybe suggested, I wasn't sure, that this could be addressed at the November annual meeting, and we could take it up at that point. I think it's a reasonable thing and very, uh, logical to just go with five tonight.
You're speaking about... Let me clarify your comment. Are you speaking about having five directors elected tonight, but have the ultimate, if you will, yearly number of Board of Directors taken care of in the November annual meeting?
I would suggest that at the November meeting, this question of how many members should we have be addressed at that point, I'm not saying it would be nine in the November, I'm saying it should be addressed in November, to suggest that it be addressed.
Thank you for the clarification. There's a person over here, please stand and state your name.
Just so you know, this board started at the total of nine members.
Yes.
And I think we should just continue. The more people we have working, the more work gets done, the more things that can be done, the more diversity. Everybody has a closer vote. I mean, when you have nine members, you have one representative per about...
By ten, I would say.
Ten. Ten. And I think that's a good ratio. I think we need to continue to have a lot of board members, because they can separate and share the work.
Uh, she is correct, as I understand that the original four, this board, uh, by various reasons declined down to five, um, and to make this meeting reasonable and to address our motion. Apparently, Linda felt five was adequate. Let's see. Andy, you're next.
Brief history, yes, there were nine board members to begin with. Shortly after the New Year, Keith was actually the president at the time, and one of the suggestions was to whittle the board back down to five. And it was actually a bigger topic that we don't have time to get into, and it's worth taking into my annual meeting, which is that, um, if you want to have nine people involved, there shouldn't be separation between the board, which all board members are equal, there's no ranking of board members, and then officers. And officers can be hired out as an outside company. In fact, they don't even have to live in the neighborhood. And so, uh, if we want to have more participation, the concentration of power is part of the issue, where somebody is both an officer and a board member and head of committee. If we want to have that type of participation, that's a good thing. But that said, five is actually a great number, uh, and I support that number from experience, and that's where we were heading anyways.
Walker?
The petitioners brought the petition to do two things. One, to renew the board, two, to elect new board members. The community at large has informed that their representation on the board was to be limited here tonight. And I believe they have the right to weigh in on that. We are starting from... Do I have the floor, Madam Chairman? Thank you very much. To limit representation without the community being informed of that ahead of time and weighing in on that proposition for a diverse board, many hands to do much work, I think was unconscionable. This is not what this meeting was about to do. It was not to limit the size of the board. I don't think this meeting has the power to do this.
Are you then implying that to fulfill the purpose of this meeting of electing new directors for the Board of Directors, that we need to elect nine tonight?
We're starting from scratch.
We are.
And the current wishes of the community is to have nine board members. We will not ask to limit this. The petitioners will not ask to limit.
That sounds like a lot of controversy from the crowd here. I need to hear... I need to progress the meeting long, Walker.
And it's not appreciated. You're injecting your own personal opinion. That's not your job as a moderator here. It's not. But you're doing that. You are... You're characterizing folks and their opinions as unworthy.
Well, you have... I can't be specific to you. I don't think... I don't think we're running time. Okay, people?
The community was not advised that they're gonna have the representation, really, tonight. You wouldn't let anybody advise anything.
Okay, let's get back to what... Get back to the motion. The motion is to... That was... Is put on the table now is, by Linda Brucker, said, "I move that we elect five Board of Directors by nomination, and election of each separately, and the election will be by separate secret ballot." There have been seconds. The discussion has now been closed, because the vote has been called for. The vote has been called for, and the chair recognized that person. That's the way Robert's Rules of Order...
I believe you are mistaken. I looked up Robert's Rules and called for the vote, and what that means. And I believe you are mistaken. Because when you call for the vote, you have to vote on the call for the vote.
Within the motion that's been put forth, I make a motion to close discussion. With the...
Okay, now, the preceding motion on the floor is a motion to close this discussion. And as I have read and utilized Robert's Rules of Order in the past, um, this is a motion that is not debatable, which means we don't discuss it. Therefore, please get your blue cards out. And the current motion to be voted on is to disclose... Or, excuse me, to... To close the discussion regarding the number of Board of Directors to be elected. Please, um, all those against voting for closing the discussion, please raise your blue cards. Against, please. Against closing the discussion, please hold them up high. There's more than that, please. Keith, will you count? Please hold them up high again. Pointed this way. Thank you. Twenty-five. That's what I counted. That was for nay. All correct? Now, those who are voting in favor of closing the discussion regarding the number of board members to elect, please raise your blue cards high. Turn it this way, please. Okay, and... Okay, there are... The motion is now carried. There were forty in favor of closing discussion and twenty-five, uh, denying that motion. So, the motion to... The motion to close the discussion is done. Now, the motion to elect five Board of Directors by nomination, an election each separately, uh, by separate secret ballots is before us, and we will do it by the raised card method again. This time, we will have the yays raise their cards first, meaning you are in favor of the motion to elect five Board of Directors by nomination and election of each separately, and the election to be by separate secret ballot. All those in favor, raise your cards, please. Help the counters.
We're doing this side first.
Okay, and this side, please raise them high again and face... Facing toward the counters. This is for yes, move to elect. Wow. Go ahead, put them down. Thank you. All the same. Okay, the motion carries with twenty-seven yes and seventeen no. I'm sorry. Getting tired, I guess. Okay, that's correct. Now, I need to see the nay votes for the motion that we elect five Board of Directors by nomination and election of each separately, and the election will be held by separate secret ballots. Please hold them up high, the nay votes. You can put your hands down, thank you. There are forty-four yays and twenty nays, so the motion is carried. Now, we are going to proceed for Position Number One, Director Number One on your, uh, sequence of possible ballots in your envelope. It is this dark blue color, or darker one color. It says Director One and Vote One. And you can write down the name. Now, wait a minute. I'm sorry. We need to tell the nominations first. I want to speed this along. Nominations are now open for Position One on the Board of Directors. Buck?
I would like to nominate Monty Davis.
Monty Davis? Who is... Is that person here? Monty, would you stand up, please, and do you accept this nomination? Thank you. Other nominations now? Yes?
I think Chair would nominate you.
You can. No, I do not accept the nomination. I'm not here full-time enough to do that right now. But you might see my face another time. Thank you, though. Yeah, excuse me.
I nominate Meg Campbell.
Meg Campbell? Would you stand up, please? Meg Campbell has been nominated for the first position in Director. Do you accept this nomination?
I second it.
Oh, seconded, okay.
Can we have a clarification?
Please.
Are we putting up all the names for one position? Or are we going through each of the positions?
We will go through five positions and however the body wants to manage it. You can nominate as many as you want until someone closes the nominations. Or you can, you know, if you have in mind that you want to do so-and-so for Position One, so-and-so for Position Two, and so-and-so, et cetera, you can do it that way. But nominations are open for the first Director which, or who we're voting on.
Can everybody see this?
Way larger, about three times larger than that. Question?
No, I'd like to nominate.
Oh, please, sorry.
We nominate Gloria Jones.
Thank you. Gloria, will you stand, please? Thank you. Gloria, do you accept this nomination? It's been seconded.
I'll accept it.
Thank you. Gloria Jones has accepted a nomination. Other nominations for this one out of five Directors? Do I, Erv? There you are. Matt Clark, do you accept this nomination?
I am going to decline this nomination for this Director position number one, but I will be open to other positions two through five to keep it faster.
Yes.
I've heard what they've, I've moved them to vote nomination.
It has been moved and seconded. The nominations now be closed for Director position number one. Now, what happens? And that doesn't need to be voted upon, by the way. I don't believe, but nevertheless, each nominee gets to speak for up to two minutes. Yes?
I would comment, speaking is not process up. If there's only going to be a total of five nominees,
Yes.
around the board, it's a total of.
No. No. And that's against Robert's Rules of Orders. It's against the American way.
In large group, it is not.
There's no designation on what is a small group and what is a large group. And this is considered a large group. Do you, Matt, have the floor?
I appreciate the effort to move more quickly. We're all in favor of that, I think. However, our bylaws require us to follow Robert's Rules of Orders. Robert's Rules of Orders does not shine favorably upon what's called quill voting, which is what you're suggesting, simply because people can be elected to the board without receiving a majority of the vote support.
I think, different, it does say in large groups. Those would be all right?
It, I would agree. I would agree with you, Erv. It's okay, but they don't recommend it if you would be accurate in everything you read.
Okay, not accurate, but I can make a motion.
Your hand was up.
Can the nominees be resubmitted again?
Yes. Nominees can be made for any one of the five positions. I hesitate to mention this, but in all honesty, anyone can nominate themselves if they so choose. It has to be seconded. And answer questions?
May I make a motion to vote?
No, because the nominees need to, are given the privilege of, if they so choose, to speak up to two minutes to tell us why they would be ideal for our HOA Board of Directors. And we'll do this alphabetically, so Meg Campbell, would you please? No? Please, please stand and speak.
I'm Meg Campbell. I've been living in Putter Overlook for thirteen years, going on thirteen years. I have three kids and I've been on, had a couple of my own businesses. I live on 2745 Headwater Drive. I'd like, I guess the reason I would run for the board is because I really do love this community. And I've done a lot for the community as far as our family is concerned. We started the bike parade. We also did a Pass Around Santa. Maybe some of you remember that. And we've had FACs in our house. And so, none of this feels good. It's not fun. But I really think that we need to not come to a board position with our own agenda more as a place where we are, everybody's voice can be heard and we'll listen to that voice. So, I have been the president of the National Charity League, so I do have some nonprofit experience. And I'd just like to say thanks to the board that volunteered their time. I know it's a thankless job and I know it's tough. So, I appreciate all the time and effort that you have put into that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, would Monty Davis please?
Hello. Yeah, my name's Monty Davis. I live at 2676 Headwater Drive. My wife and I moved into the neighborhood and we've lived here less than two years. I've never sat on a neighborhood board before, but I have sat on a Board of Directors for a large corporation, so I do understand how boards should operate. You know, we bought our house site unseen. We bought it online. My son went on with his iPhone and videotaped it for us and we bought it. And it's not been our dream house, but it's been our dream neighborhood. We love everybody that we've met in this neighborhood and, you know, we'll never move from this neighborhood. I'm retired and we'll stay here just because of the people that are here. And I would like to serve you as one of your Board of Directors and tell you that, you know, the rules are here to be enforced, and I believe there's gray. And that's our job as Board of Directors is to find that gray and make sure that we're doing the right thing for you. So, that's my two cents. Thank you.
And next, Gloria Jones, please.
I'm Gloria Jones. I'm the one that's been running up and down the street, going to the front to be sure that the shrubs are watered. I live at 2814 Headwater. I have been here for twelve years. I want, I think it's a good community. I'm distressed that all of this has happened. But I want to continue serving. And the, in the past, since November, I've been to four seminars on HOA boards, HOA neighborhoods, you know, what, what should be done. I've spent my home money on landscape classes to try to do naturalization up front. And I know there's people who still don't like it, but...
Just don't get off that topic.
All right. You know, that's, you know, I've put my heart and soul into the neighborhood and to that. So, I would like to continue serving.
Yes. Is there a second? Oh, I'm sorry. Liz has moved to end of discussion for the first Board of Director position. There's been a second. All opposed to closing the nominations for the first Director, please raise your blue cards. All opposed for closing the nomination.
Closing discussion.
Closing discussion, okay. Is there any discussion to be had? Okay, thank you. So, discussion is closed now as defined by me, the Chair. Okay, now, voting on the secret ballot. Again, it's the blue ballot, the same color as your card, your number card. Director number one, vote number one. And you have to write your nominee's name that you're voting for on the card. And the baskets will be, are going around to recollect. There's a question here? Yes. We will be counting the votes here in front of you again, hopefully quickly and accurately. And you will know who the first Director to be nominated and elected will be. You can vote for the same person all five times, but each ballot is, is separate.
Strictly the blue strip.
Strictly the blue. Now, I hate to point this out, but the reason that these have been developed is to, I can't imagine that any of you are clever enough to duplicate colors and verbiage and everything. This is to avoid any stuffing of ballots. I'm sorry it even had to be brought up, but, but it is a very specific way to count secret ballots. Oh. Now, by way of explanation why they're being collected, a nominee can withdraw from a particular ballot anytime after any of the ballots. After the first ballot, if no majority is reached by a nominee, then a motion will need to be entertained as to whether, or it is suggested at least, a motion be entertained as to whether or not, to speed it along, the lowest number who received votes on the slate of nominees for that directorship would be dropped if that motion is made and carried. If there's a tie by Robert's Rules of Order, the lowest number nominee must remain on the ballot. Question?
Hey, I don't want to make a trouble, but you guys just found in the background how the nominee's first name, so we're not doing all that. Because I'm going to make a motion like that.
It's not going to take any more time because he has to give the name to the tallyer. So, it just allows you to be a witness to the counting. And you can verify the votes if you'd like. Other questions somewhere? Yes? Louder, please.
I carry Mark Davis to adopt a special rule of order in compliance with Robert's Rules of Order for that nominee with the first votes to drop from the list of nominees for the secret ballots.
Can we show the nominee three for this first one?
First, the ballots need to be counted and then we'll consider that motion. Then I may have to have you repeat it. Okay, please count. Go. Okay, May. Monty. May. Gloria. May. Monty. Gloria. May. 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 Gloria. May. And, May. And, may. I guess I could mention there's water over here that was freshly brought to the room just before the meeting started, and somebody kindly brought cookies if there's need for somebody's glucose level. I really appreciate your cooperation and your attentiveness tonight, and are you ready, counters? Because there are seventy households, or seventy votes and proxies, plus proxies, I should say, represented, the majority would be thirty-six for an election, okay? Thirty-six. And the other two, please? Oh, Monty Davis received fifteen, and Gloria Jones received fifteen. You have sixteen for Monty by your count? It's good enough. We have an election. May, do you accept this election as the order of director of the Pooter HOA? Thank you. Next, number two. Then right on to your director number two, vote. No, 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 yeah, director. Nominations for director number two. So pull out your next set of, starting with the number two vote. Again, it's a blue color, it says director number two, vote one, write in the name. Nominations are now open, yes? Gloria, do you accept this nomination, please? Thank you. Next, nominations? Monty, do you accept this nomination for director position number two? Thank you. A second, did I hear? Thank you, I thought I heard one, but. Are there, Andy? Matt Clark has been nominated for director number two. It's been seconded, and Matt Clark is shaking his head up and down, indicating yes, he accepts the nomination. Erv?
Just a curious question, if there's any objections under the law?
Objections to what? You can register your vote later, but. No, anybody can be nominated, but you cannot object to a person's nomination, no. That's fine, that's good, that's good, let's learn as we go. Okay. The nominees for the, do I hear a motion to close the nominations? And a second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. No nays, okay. The nominees for the second position are now in alphabetical order, Matt Clark, Gloria Davis, no, Monty Davis. And Gloria Jones is the third nominee. And at this point, we will hear first Matt Clark speak.
You've already seen me in action a little bit, but real quickly, I would be happy to accept a nomination of the other board, because I think that would help the neighborhood a lot. I have had some experience in administrative type work, I was president of an eight-hundred-plus physician group at my hospital in Salt Lake City, Utah, where I worked. I was also director of my anesthesiology department of thirty-six physicians, and believe me, doing those physicians is almost as tough as dealing with you guys. I'm currently the architectural control committee chair, only been in that position for a couple months, but already I think I've made some impact in the sense that I'm trying to help streamline the process for making requests for improvements, and so far, I think everybody's been very supportive of my effort there. I describe myself as a hard worker, very detail-oriented, I don't believe I have any agenda in being on the board. I very much believe in following rules, or amending them if they're not good rules, and if there is some reason, I think Monty mentioned a gray area, that if you do break the rule, you document very clearly why you did that. I pledged to uphold the platform that was put out there as far as communicating well, transparency, survey HOA as best as I can, and revising and updating our documents, I think those are the most important things for the next board to take on. Thanks.
And now to speak, Monty, do you wish to speak again? Monty declines to speak, Gloria, do you wish to speak?
I would like to withdraw from this directorship at this point, and let it be between Matt and Monty.
Gloria withdraws her name from this directorship.
I will run for another one.
She indicates she's willing to run for another position. Do I hear a nomination be closed? And seconded, and? Okay, and discussion has been moved to, discuss, to close discussion and to proceed with voting. A second, once a second, okay. Voting on the second directorship position, vote number one. I hope you haven't done this, but I've got my things all mixed up. What color is the vote sheet? Oh, it's, excuse me, it's the vote number one is still the same blue color, I'm sorry.
Director number two, vote number one.
Yes. Director number two, vote for ballot number one. And votes are being collected. Everyone return their ballot. Are all ballots now collected? Any ballots still remaining to be collected? Ballots are considered to be collected now? They're being consolidated to one basket. And now, tally, readers, go for it. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Monty. Thank you. Monty. 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 Matt. 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 Monty. Matt. Monty. 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 Matt. Monty. Monty. Matt. 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 Monty. Monty. Matt. Matt. Monty. Monty. Matt. Matt. Monty. Matt. Matt. We have more, so that's a. Throw now, throw it out, so don't, we got one that's not valid. Matt. Okay. Matt. Monty. Matt. 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 Monty. Matt. 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 Monty. Matt. Matt. Monty. 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 Matt. Monty. Matt. 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 Monty. Matt. 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 And, Monty. Yes. Please. We are trying to keep this, so if anybody wants to question the counting, that it could be followed. That's why we're doing it this way. As I was led to believe, in sometime past, there were questions about accuracy and stuffed ballot boxes, et cetera, I don't know whether any of that's legitimate, but I recommend that. I'm not saying it was true, I'm telling you, the reason we're doing it this way is to try and avoid any problem. Thank you. Excuse me, drop that comment. I know it takes time, but it'll get faster with each director, I promise. I'll be surprised if it doesn't. Okay, please tell me the votes. Yes, I think I can read that, there's been one invalid, about twenty-five votes for Monty, and forty-three, which is beyond the majority for Matt Clark. Matt, do you accept this nomination? Thank you. Next, director number three. And same thing, same blue color, yes, Erv? Yes, nominations are now open for position director number three. Monty Davis has been nominated, and Monty, will you please continue to accept this nomination? Thank you. Yes? I need a second, first, seconds are abound. A motion was made to close this nomination. Well, now, just a minute, a motion was made to close the nominees, the nominations, so if you don't want to close the nominations, you'll have to take a vote. It was seconded, I heard, so with your blue cards, those who, those who oppose closing the nomination for director number three, please raise your cards high, and hold them still, and face the numbers toward our counters, please. This is to close the nomination, it's all. Okay, put them down, let me clarify, let me clarify. Okay, so this will be to oppose the closure of the nominations, to oppose the closure, meaning you want more nominations, please hold them high. And this is to oppose closure of the nomination. You ready? There are forty-six, so we don't even need to ask for the names, the nominations are now open again for director number three position, please. Please. Jen Hutchinson, do you... Thank you, do you accept this nomination? She accepts, thank you. Are there other nominations to be made for the third director position?
Nominate Gloria.
Gloria, do you accept this nomination? Oh, is there a second, I'm sorry, a second? Do I hear a second for Gloria's nomination? Is that a second? Please speak it, thank you.
I will accept it for Director number three.
Gloria Jones. Thank you, declines this nomination, but will accept other future director positions. Okay. Are we ready now to... Okay, all those opposed to closing the nominations at this time for the third directorship position, please raise your counting cards. Opposed closing the nomination. None are shown, therefore this passes, the nominations are now closed. Now, uh... Monty and Jen, uh, Monty, would you like to make any other additional comments to your nomination? And Jen, would you like to speak to your nomination?
Hi, I'm Jen Hutchinson. I count many of you as my friends and all of you as fabulous neighbors. I feel very lucky to be in this neighborhood. We've been here since September 30th, 2005, so we are early adopters to this lifestyle. This has been so distressing for all of us. And my goal here is that we move forward and that we can come together. And I don't have any skin in the game, there's a lot of conflict going on. I'm just a trophy winner to Stuart and I'm a mom there to Quinn and Evan. You probably moved, that's pretty much the neighborhood. Dabble in accounting. I have an history then, um, a controller for the training and distribution businesses of J.B. Hudson. I also was a auditor for a small CPA firm in Denver. I maintain my CPA license in case any of you is in need of one, very short. Um, but really, my goal here is that we all come together a little bit, that we leave a little more wanting to be neighbors, the reason that we're all here. And I hear a lot of devices and I'm sorry for everybody's stress and I'm trying not to cry. I've had a couple of people ask me, this has really been hard for all of us. And I would like to help us to come together as best I can.
What's your...
Oh, sorry, 1394 and Trudy Terry Court. We're the ones with the square nine, please.
What do you want?
Play holding for zero nine.
Okay, uh, so now, vote on your specific secret ballot. The one that says Director three, vote one, which is also this same bluish colored vote. Please put the name down of your nominee you choose to vote for, and the ballots will begin to be collected. You guys, I'm impressed at the way your attitude has been toward this meeting and that you're willing to invest time and you care about the HOA. Very impressive, it's very... So I would, uh... Okay, have all ballots been collected? Okay, we will consolidate ballots into one basket, please, and let's begin the ballot count. Oh, Ben. And some more. And some more. And let's count.
Monty. 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 Jen. Monty. 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 Jen. Monty. Jen. Jen. Monty. 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 Jen. 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 Monty. Monty.
To save time, if we go over 36, please let me know.
Jen. 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 Monty. Jen. Monty. Monty. Jen. Jen. Monty. Monty. Jen. 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 Monty. Jen. Jen. Monty. Jen. 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 Monty. Jen. 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 Monty. Jen. 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 Monty. Monty. Last one, Jen.
Did anyone choose to continue to put another vote in or did somebody have to leave? We're down to 69 votes. However, there has been an election. Jen Hutchinson, you have 37 votes. Do you accept this nomination and election? Thank you. Next, for Director position number four, please, it's getting faster. There was a hand over here. Thank you, Gloria Jones, you've been nominated, do you accept this nomination?
I will.
Thank you, she does accept the nomination, do I hear a second? Thank you. Other nominations, yes?
I'll say a nomination first, I want to apologize because I don't know his last name. And I'd like to nominate Herb and Sprockin. Rocket, Rocket, fucking, fucking Herb.
Herb, do you accept this nomination?
Yes, I do, madam.
Thank you. And did I hear a second, I heard a lot of... Thank you, just to be official, thank you. Other nominations, Buck? Monty, or... You're not willing to accept this nomination? Monty declines accepting the nomination, other nominations? There's a motion and second to close nominations. All in favor, no, all opposed, raise your blue card. All opposed to closing the nominations, raise your blue card. Now... And the motion carries, thank you. Okay, the nominees are requested to speak. Gloria Jones, Gloria, would you please address the body today, again, if you'd like to?
I do not know what to add. As I said, I would like to continue working for the neighborhood. I think it's a good neighborhood. And I put a lot of heart and soul into it.
Yes, I will. Thank you, Madam Chairman and neighbors. I got a little low here. Most neighbors in our community already know me, but in case you don't, my name's Herb Wetherington. My wife Barbara and I have lived in 1417 Battle Ford for the past 13 years. This month, in fact. I'm the guy out walking the small dog named Rocket. Our pets most likely have already met. I have quite an extensive experience working with people and groups of people. I did 37 years as my former employer at MC Corporation. It was an industrial chemical plant underground line. As for volunteer experience, I served as Senior Vice Commander of my hometown American Legion, Archie Haybost, 500, 510, six years, not 500. I am the volunteer driver for any veteran who needs a ride to the VA Hospital in Cheyenne, Wyoming. I do this for the Lariv County Bedford Service Office. I volunteer annually at the Veterans Stand Down around November 11th. It's the Veterans Day holiday. And I set up and distribute clothing, essentials, and other things for our veterans. I was the main organizer for the 2016 and 17 End of Summer Oktoberfest. Maybe you guys saw me cooking your food, your hamburgers and brats. I have voluntarily, for the past 13 years, removed snow and plowed all of our neighborhood sidewalks. And all the entrances to our Puder Overlook. I also clean the driveways for elderly and widowed people. The collect that I will do my best to know and abide by HOA covenants, bylaws, and rules and regulations, as Robert's Rules of Order moved by state. I plan to work to restore the camaraderie in our community, give it back to being neighbors, for all homeowners, neighbors, hopefully friends. I promise to serve the Puder Overlook community as a pleasure of the homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Now, to find Director number four, vote one. It's also on the blue card in your fourth, um, group of ballots. And the ballots will begin to be collected. By the way, we did make appropriate arrangements to go past 9 o'clock. We're not all going to be locked in here or anything. We have cookies to share. Again, if you're becoming dehydrated, feel free to go get water over the table over here. Don't do that, don't get dehydrated. Matt doesn't want to have to revive anybody, he's worked hard enough. Any other ballots to be collected? Okay, the ballots have been all collected and now will be consolidated and read. Thank you.
Gloria. Herb. Gloria. Herb. 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 Gloria. 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 These artistic... Gloria. Herb. Gloria. 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 Herb. 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 Gloria. Herb. Gloria. Herb. 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 Gloria. Herb. Herb. Gloria. Gloria. Herb. 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 Gloria. Herb. Gloria. Gloria. Herb. Gloria. 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 Gloria.
Gloria. Gloria. Gloria. Gloria. Gloria. Gloria. Herb. 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 Gloria. Gloria. Herb. Gloria. Last one. Herb. Thank you. This is close one. Gloria received thirty-three votes and Herb received thirty-five votes. We need to have thirty-six votes, although the total here is sixty-eight votes, so that would be thirty-four votes, where the majority of votes cast. So, your chair indicates that Herb, you have now been elected to the board, are you willing to accept this election?
Madam Chairman, yes, I am.
Thank you. Thirty-five to thirty-three. Next, the last directorship position, Director number five. Again, the blue voting ballot. And is there someone who wishes to make a nomination, Ben?
I nominate Sarah Young.
Sarah Young has been seconded, Sarah Young, who are you, would you stand please, so we can see who you are? Do you accept this nomination? Thank you. Next. Gloria Jones has been nominated for this position, Gloria, do you accept this nomination?
Yes, I will.
Thank you, moved and, or accepted and seconded, thank you. Yes. Monty Davis, sir, you have, you've been nominated to run for the fifth directorship position, would you consider accepting this nomination? He not only declines, he just passes. Yes? It has been moved, the nomination's closed, do I hear a second? Seconded, okay. So you know the process? All, all those opposed to closure of the nominations, please raise your blue cards, if any. Opposed to closure of the nomination. The nominations are now closed, so the thought that for Director number five position, Sarah Young and Gloria Jones are the nominees and... Yes, we do need to hear them speak, please. Sarah, oh, wait a minute, I have to have Gloria go first because we do this alphabetically by Robert's Rules of Order. Gloria, please.
I don't have to do this, so I'll give it to you.
Sarah?
Thank you. Thank you Gloria. Hi, my name is Sarah Young, I live at two eight zero three Headwater Drive. We're the ones who did a huge landscaping project earlier this month, it's almost all done. Yay. We've lived in our house since November of two thousand six, so come in the month thirteen years, we count that by our oldest son, who was born five days after we moved in. So I've got two boys, sixth grade, seventh grade, they both go to CLP Middle School. We've been love and support community ever since we moved in. We moved to the west side because it's quiet, it's close to the outdoors, frequent the heights nearby and the biking trails. I am a nurse, I'm the nurse manager in the radiology department at Pooter Valley Hospital. I work alongside all of the different modalities in radiology as well as the units of the hospital. I collaborate with other hospitals and clinics in our area as well. So I work, I work well with people and I love our community. And I'd love to be able to serve you on our board to promote that community feeling again.
Thank you. Okay, now, are we ready to vote? Please get your, please get your same colored Director five ballot number one voting ballot, and they will be collected momentarily. Make sure your vote, votes are, ballots are handed in, please. All ballots now collected, any ballots remaining to be collected? Thank you, all ballots will be turned in for counting. While they're getting organized, I have been asked by one of our HOA members to read this, although he's gone, so I don't think I'll take your time. It would be entertaining, but I'll just read it, okay. This is something, it's a quote from John F. Kennedy. "So let us begin anew, remembering on both sides that civility is not a sign of weakness and sincerity is always subject to proof. Let us never negotiate out of fear, but let us never fear to negotiate. Let both sides explore what problems unite us instead of belaboring those problems which divide us." Again attributed to President John F. Kennedy. And are you ready to read the ballots? Gloria. 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 Sarah. 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 Gloria. 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 Sarah. Gloria. Sarah. Sarah. Gloria. Sarah. 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 Gloria. Sarah. 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 Gloria. Sarah. Gloria. Sarah. Gloria. Sarah. Gloria. Gloria. Sarah. Sarah. Gloria. Gloria. Sarah. Gloria. Sarah. 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 Gloria. Sarah. Gloria. Sarah. Gloria. Sarah. Sarah. Gloria. Sarah. Gloria. Sarah. 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 Gloria. Gloria. Sarah. Sarah. Gloria. Gloria. Sarah. While they're, excuse me, tallying this last vote, I'd like to thank a number of people. Our tally people, you can see have been going through a big job. It's a lot hotter up here than it is down there. Not just because of the votes, but it's warm up here. But I thank you, all three of you very much. I'd also like to, on, on my behalf, thank the past board members for serving. And we take your word that you've served at your best ability and with the community's best interest at heart. And appreciate your cooperation through this process. And we hope that you will provide your expertise for counseling their services or other voluntary positions as they may be asked, thank you.
I'm the only person here who has my hands on a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yes.
I'm amongst us.
It is assumed that in very short order, requested to be immediately, that the five new board members meet and get with the previous Board of Directors and make appropriate arrangements and, and go from there. We certainly don't want to have anyone managing anything that they would no longer choose to do. And we need to have continuity of our organization, again, Buck?
Okay, just, just for the side, I know that's going to take a few days, so are you ready to do that? I'm happy to just move month end, keep towards pay bill. But I just need somebody on the board, probably in all the room, I'd like to know, and tell them to transition.
Thank you, are you talking about through August or through September? Through August, so the current board will need to jump into gear and decide among yourselves who will be what office. I think it's important that was said, it was Lyndon or somebody, that all officers, all Board of Directors have equal value to the organization. The president does not dominate over the other four offices or three offices, however many they choose to, to appoint. But the idea is working together. Thank you. There was a question. For the fifth Director, Sarah Young has thirty-seven votes and Gloria Jones has thirty-one. Sarah, where are you, do you accept this election? Thank you very much. One more comment that I would like to make, please realize that there are many voluntary positions and your experience, Monty and Gloria in particular, are needed to advise and be, you know, providing your knowledge and suggestions to the current board, Bill? A motion has been made and seconded to close this meeting, and I may take a voice vote on this. For our closure and adjournment of the meeting. Any opposed? Thank you, this special meeting is now closed, and thank you again so much for your cooperation.
Congratulations.